Can you hear me? Hi, sorry, just a brief announcement, the board will reconvene at 6:45.
Yep.
And he actually... ...at the little gazebo. ...you guys, he was... Oh yeah. All that trouble. (laughing) I get a smile coffee? A smile? Can I get a smile, Pizzari? I was told I can't ask.
I'm always smiling.[1474.00][1479.00](laughing)
Right. Ah.
The board is reconvening from closed session at 6:47, apologies. And now we are gonna go ahead and move on to our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land currently occupied by Washington Unified School District as the traditional home of the Patwin people. The sovereign people have been caretakers of the area since time in Morial. And despite centuries of genocide and occupation, the Patwin people continue as vibrant and resilient federally recognized and unrecognized tribes, bands, and rancherias. Today, we honor and recognize our Patwin tribal neighbors for their contribution as the caretakers of the Sacramento Valley and honor their sustained existence. With their blessing and continued guidance, Washington Unified School District seeks to provide an accessible, equitable, and supportive institution of learning and experience. And now we will do our pledge of allegiance if Maxwell will please lead us.
...of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, equal physical, liberty, and justice.
Alright, and now roll call, Vice President Pizzari.
I'm here.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Present.
And pursuant to the government code 54953. B regarding teleconference participation, Trustee Wong will be joining us in this meeting via teleconference. In accordance with the Brown Act, her address was identified on the agenda for this meeting. Trustee Wong.
Here.
Alright. Trustee Vanegas is not present, and I too am present. Alright, announcement of the actions to be taken in closed session. Would like to note that we will be going back to closed session to... For D1, Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Superintendent Evaluation. However, we're going to go ahead and announce what is happening with the other items that we discussed. So D2, Government Code Section 54956.9D2, pending of potential litigation, the approval of the settlement. It was unanimous yes, voting yes to approve. And for 2B, the approval of the settlement agreement and general release between Washington Unified and the parents, 3 to 1, voting yes to approve. As for D3, Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference... Oh wait, Conference with Labor Negotiators, WSTA, CSEA, and management, information was received. And as for D4, Student Appeal of Grade Acceleration Decision, Ed. Code 35146. We approved the appeal. So, with that. And we're gonna go ahead and... Approval of the agenda. Do we have any areas?
Yes, there's one change. I would like to ask if we can move action item P13 and have that come before P11.
P13? Move before P11?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody move? We need to... Go moved?
Second.
Clerk Sarah Kirby Gonzalez moves, and Trust... Vice President Pizzari seconds, and all... Roll call vote. Huh. Got it. Alright. Clerk... Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzari.
Aye.
And I too say aye, so we'll move that. So we have approval of the agenda, communications, and celebrations. We have approval of the agenda, communications and celebrations, we do not have any at this moment. How about Association Reports, WSTA? President.
Stop smiling, Daniel. All right, no fire and brimstone for me tonight, I just got back from Europe with my daughter and wife, so it's nice to see you. I forgot how much people smile, because there's not as much smiling over there, but really gracious people, just not as much smiling. I wanted to start off tonight by celebrating both the ratification and approval of, well, the soon-to-be-approved agreements between WSTA and WUSD. I am really pleased that we were able to work together. Looks like we're going to continue to be able to do at least a partial version of IBB moving forward to continue with this experiment. And we look forward to that. WSTA recognizes the challenging financial times ahead, given the budget and what the state looks like. And as such, we were happy to settle this year, understanding that moving forward, we will continue to try and find ways, given what's going on with healthcare, and cost of living, and rising inflation, to make sure that our teachers can continue to work and thrive in West Sacramento. I don't have much tonight, I wanted to discuss a little bit. I found out today from talking to a colleague and looking at the Facebook website that the Community Schools is offering kinder care, which sounds fantastic through the United Way. Obviously, we, teachers always support improving opportunities for students. My only concern is that this item did not go through the Steering Committee, and thus did not get representation from teachers and CSCA employees to talk about ways that we could support and serve. And as it's a budget item and is being paid for through community schools, that's a concern for us as we continue to try and collaborate with WUSD and the United Way in continuing our community schools project. So I want to make sure that this doesn't occur in the future. As somebody who has offered summer kindergarten enrichment and support programs myself, I know what is required, and I know that there may be teachers here in this district that would have had the skills and the desire to do some of that work. And maybe it wouldn't have been appropriate, and maybe it wouldn't have been something that would have worked for teachers, but we certainly would have liked to have the conversation in regards to that. I am, first of all, I'm excited to see LCFF or LCFF going through and hear that report. Kind of like we're doing with community schools, I would like to see our funding formulas be a little bit more robust with labor partners and community members. My understanding, it's better than it used to be, my understanding is that everybody comes together and then the district makes a plan and it goes forward. There's one last step I would like to see, and that would be that after the district makes a plan, it goes back to the community partners to look at how their input was taken and making sure it's in alignment. Obviously, it's not a check, right, the district has the right to develop the plan, but I think in good faith with partners, community partners, and labor, it would be good that they got to see that their input was taken in before the report was made to the board. HR and I have a lot of work to do this summer. We have a lot of MOUs to continue and push forward. I'm really excited about Yolo's schedule change. As I've been saying for two years, I look forward to Yolo having the opportunity to be an innovative place where students get what they need to succeed and grow and have job opportunities and internships. So I'm looking forward to that work. And then we also have to continue some of the other MOUs. And so I've already talked to Farrah and Shay, and we're going to get going on that pretty quick. I actually talked to Shay for the first time a couple of minutes ago, and at that point responded to the email she sent me a couple of weeks ago, so very timely as usual. That being said, I want to wish you all a happy summer, it is nice to see everybody, it's nice to see Daniel back there. I'm super excited to be here with my WSTA partners, Dr. Amber Bradley and Carmen Wright, and shortest one yet.
Thank you. CSCA report. President Gondara.
Good evening, President Coffey, Superintendent Hildreth, trustees and cabinet. Thank you Doug for acknowledging me, I'm glad you're here too. I first would like to thank the board with their support in tonight hopefully approving the tentative agreement with CSCA and WUSD and the salary schedule. As Doug mentioned, I learned about the summer program at Riverbank, the Kinder Camp, through Facebook, how else does anybody know anything these days? And again, it wasn't on the Steering Committee. And just questions, is there possibly par educators that could have been involved in this role? What are we doing in these classrooms? Just those questions that we're never able to answer, and just to ensure that there's no violation of the collective bargaining agreement. One thing I would like to get done before August is, as I mentioned before, is the district approves standards. And that's for my campus aides and my noon duties when there's physical altercations in a school with students. Because as I mentioned before, breaking up physical altercations is not in their job description currently, so what are they expected to do? And with our secretaries, I know I am in a Facebook group with 300 classified presidents and chief job stewards throughout the state, and we bounce questions off each other, and I know a lot of answers came back that students with behavioral issues are not left alone in the office with the secretaries, there's always a campus aide, noon duty, whatever's at that site with them. So I'm looking forward to working with the district on that. And then just the last thing, I know, hey, election time's coming up. So anybody out there that's running, thinking about running, and looking for CSCA's endorsement, I'm not going to reach out to you, you guys know how to get ahold of me. With that, you guys have a good evening and have a good summer, thank you.
I was like, and he said what he said. All right, thank you, thank you. And now for public comments. Earlier I read the disclaimer, and so I feel that covered us. So do we have any public comments?
None received.
I'm kind of shocked right now, so I'm like, wait a minute, I'm not ready for that. And now for our public hearing, okay, only done this once prior. There we go, all right. Let's see. We have a public hearing for, public hearing for the 2024 Developer Fee Justification Study and the proposed statutory level one. Public hearing for the 2024 Developer Fee Justification Study and the proposal statutory level one developer fees, Monique Stovall. There you are.
Here I am. I came on up.
Yes, you did.
Thank you, I'm joined this evening by our Director of Facilities, Dan Vanowitz, to help answer any questions you may have. This evening, we are having a public hearing first, and then we'll seek approval of the 2024 developer fees. What are developer fees? It's the income that we receive when there's residential or commercial construction or development in the area. Its intent is to help us to mitigate the effect of potentially increased student in our district. Every two years, or even every even year, the State Allocation Board adjusts how much we can charge per square foot when there's new. And so this year, we're doing our biannual board update and public hearing and request for approval of the new fees. With the study, what's pretty interesting about it is in the study, it anticipates through development over the next years, about 430 students may, that's based upon the information that's happening now, and it's really a calculation. It doesn't take into subjective information in the area. With these 430 students, it may require us to modernize our facilities at a cost of about $50. And so when we're looking at the less than $6 that we get per square foot, that will not give us money to be able to build a new school, but it does help us to address any facilities-related expenses that may be associated with changes in our enrollment or even changes in our enrollment for the past few years. The study recommends and has determined that we would be eligible to increase the residential per square foot rate by 38 cents to $5.17 per square foot, and the commercial rate by 6 cents to bring it to 84 cents. And that's that, right, okay.
So our second public hearing, oh wait, do we have any questions? I figured we go from there to the next. Are there any public comments?
None received.
Questions from the board? No? All right. And so now for our second, which is public review of the reasons for assigned/unassigned excess reserves documented as required by the California Education Code, Monique Stovall. Do I have it again? There we go.
Hey, thank you. We are here for the public hearing for the reserves, excess reserves, reasons for excess reserves. Here with Billy Duba, our Director of Fiscal Services, which will, he will provide you information about.
Thank you, good evening. This is the public review of the reasons for assigned and unassigned excess reserves. This is an annual item, it's related to the budget. We're doing the public hearing now, and we'll seek approval with our budget later on. California requires a district of our size to maintain a minimum reserve for economic uncertainties of 3%. The multi-year projection of our adopted budget for 2425 shows that we're going to have a reserve equal to 9.97% of our projected expenditures, which exceeds the state minimum recommended reserve by 6.97%. Board policy establishes a minimum reserve equal to 6% of general expenditures. Per Ed. Code, the school district that proposes to adopt a budget that includes combined assigned and unassigned any fund balance in excess of the 3% reserve as a public review hearing like this and approval of the budget for review and discussion. Our submission of the adopted budget to meet Ed. Code requirements, Yolo County of Education asked that we complete this hearing and approval before September 1st of 2024. This item supports strategic plan goal 3, opportunity and achievement for every student, and LCAP goal number 2, culture and climate.
All right. And that concludes the hearing, even though we have questions, do we have any public comments?
None received.
Do you have any questions?
Okay. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure I got this, this only looks at this year, correct? This year's ending fund balance because next year drops pretty dramatically, and then the year after that substantially more. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, well this concludes the hearing.
Thank you.
And now for information discussion items. The presentation of the California Dashboard Local Indicators for Washington Unified School District and Washington Middle College High School Autry Streak.
Good evening. This evening I am presenting our local indicators as part of the LCAP approval. Christine, I'll need you to change the slides, okay? All right, so we'll dig right in. Again, the purpose of tonight's presentation is to share some information about the local indicators, our local performance indicators that are a part of the California dashboard, and explain how we gathered that data and have it be a part of the LCAP approval. So our content for this presentation aligns with our strategic plan goals, especially our whole child, healthy, safe, challenged, and supported environments. Our first equity principle, cultivating healthy relationships that create a safe and empowering environment for every student, staff, family, and community member. And our four pillars, in particular pillar C, learning and growth opportunities for all employees. Next slide, please. Go back one, please. So I think we were here in September to give the board an update on our California dashboard data. And a part of what goes into giving us our scores is what we call local performance indicators. And they're different from the state performance indicators because we collect the data ourselves, they're not collected by the state. We collect them and then we report them to the state, and they become part of our dashboard data. So I just wanted to make that distinction between our state measures and our local performance indicators. So the indicators are based on our eight LCFF state priorities, which are categorized into three areas. Conditions for learning, pupil outcomes, and engagement. And the eight priorities are basic resources, implementation of state standards, course access, pupil achievement, and other student outcomes, parent involvement, pupil engagement, and school climate. Okay, and so in our self-assessment, we rated ourselves on the five local indicators you see on this slide. So basic conditions at school, implementation of state academic standards, parent engagement, school climate, and whether or not our students have access to a broad course of study. And the graphic below the chart just kind of shows how we, what goes into that. So on the dashboard, it identifies areas of strength and need for all LEAs in the state of California. It also includes local data, so what additional data are we using to inform our decisions and our planning? And combined, those two areas inform what we include in our LCAP. And so the LCAP really is our way to identify our needs, allocate resources appropriately, and set some goals for ourselves, all in the name of improving outcomes for students. So I'm going to talk just a little bit about the self-analysis process. And so the state provides us with self-reflection tools that we use for each of the local indicators. And so in the rating scale, you'll see on the third bullet, and it's from lowest to highest, not highest to lowest. So the lowest phase of implementation would be exploration and research, and the highest would be number five, full implementation and sustainability. And let's see, so this is just a little bit of where we, how we gathered that survey data. So through our parent advisory committees, including D-LAC, through our... through our educational partner engagement meetings when we were developing the LCAP, that there was also an opportunity for people to give us feedback on these local indicators. And so what did the results, results tell us? So for priority one, zero percent. And remember, I'm presenting for our district as well as our Washington Middle College. I'll give results for both, both LEAs. So Washington Unified School District, zero percent of students are without access to standards-aligned instructional materials, and all of our physical facilities are deemed in good repair based on the facility's inspection tool. And again, this is information that we've gathered through a survey of our own people. This is not something that, a designation that the state has given us. And then for Washington Middle College, on those same indicators, again, zero percent of students are without access to standards-aligned instructional materials, meaning we're in Williams compliance, complying with Williams. And then the facilities at Middle College are, were considered in exemplary repair based on the same self-assessment tool. So for priority two, implementation of state academic standards. For the district, all areas were rated either initial implementation or full implementation. Our areas of strength that the data showed are instructional materials that are aligned to academic standards, professional development that is provided and offered to staff, and following whether or not teachers are using academic standards in their daily practice. Our areas of growth is to make sure we are providing teachers regular professional development whenever we adopt new curriculum and to continue to focus on meeting the needs of individual students. And then for Washington Middle College, very similar. Most areas were rated initial implementation or full implementation. Areas of strength, instructional materials are aligned to academic standards, so is professional development. And teachers do follow academic standards. And then the areas of focus is figuring out how to provide Washington Middle College students with broader access to CTE pathways. Priority three, parent and family engagement. For our district, all areas were rated initial implementation or full implementation. Our areas of strength are building relationships, building partnerships and seeking input from our stakeholders. And our areas of focus is to increase the number of parent volunteers on our campuses, host more parent community forums, and provide access to community resource centers. For Washington Middle, areas of strength, building relationships, partnerships and seeking input. And an area of focus is involvement of a variety of parents on the advisory committee. Next slide, please. Priority six, which is not parent and family engagement as the slide says. It's actually school climate. That's a, an error, forgive us for that. So for Washington Unified School District, for this upcoming school year, we will use the Healthy Kids Survey as our self-assessment tool. This year, we used a climate survey that district staff developed in collaboration with Kelvin. And the data show that our strengths for in grades three through twelve, ninety-three percent of our students report that teachers and other adults at school tell them what, when they do a good job, so that praise and encouragement. Another area of strength, seventy-seven percent of students indicate that teachers and other adult figures within the school environment demonstrate concern for their well-being. And then what we noticed in the data as areas of need is for that same, in those same grade spans, third through twelfth, twenty-two percent of students expressed apprehension regarding school safety. And in our third through fifth grade band, fifty-three percent of students reported experiencing feelings, feelings of sadness. And a complete report of our spring Kelvin survey data will be provided to, to the trustees. Priority seven, so do our students have broad access to, access to a broad course of study? So ELA, math, visual and performing arts, sciences. And we reported, again, on our self-assessment that all students in our district and in Washington Middle College High School have access to or are enrolled in a broad course of study. However, we recognize that there is continued and urgent need and a continued and urgent need to consistently analyze data, student achievement data, to address and reduce disparities that we noticed between student groups based on race, ability, income and language. Okay? And I believe that is the last, second to last slide. So this data from our local performance indicators will be uploaded this summer, and you'll see it again when we come back to present our California dashboard data for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Okay? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comments?
None received.
Any comments from the board?
I just have one quick question. It said that our facilities are in good repair. Does that include Elkhorn, which is scheduled to be remodeled? Or, and also WOVA or old Westmoreau?
Yes, it's, remember, it's data from whoever completed the survey and it's all sites, including the current Elkhorn site and WOVA, which is located at Clarendon.
Which is interesting because the whole reason why we're passing a bond to remodel the site is because it's in disrepair. So it, it strikes me as odd to see that it comes up as, you know, all sites are in, in good repair. Even though, you know, it's not a knock against anybody. We know that it is. We're just trying to address a problem and that's what's on. So I, I was expecting to see, you know, to have some sort of, say, like, one or two, you know, could stand to be fixed up here, here and here.
I can get you more details, but my understanding is that the reporting does not have to be spelled out. That way, it's more of a conglomerate of all of our sites. And because it was, Washington Middle is just a standalone, that one was rated as the highest. And so because some of our, we have some more modern sites and then sites that are on their way to being modernized, I think there's an average, but I'll make sure that I get you more details. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, okay. And I, I may have missed this. Half of our students are feeling sad. What was our intervention for that?
Our, our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Department has spent a lot of time this year focused on tier one PBIS structures that address all students' needs. The Kelvin, the way the Healthy Kids Survey is administered, kids, once kids take the assessment, there's particular questions that depending on their responses, adults that are connected to them at the school are alerted immediately so that they can follow up and have one-on-one conversations to find out if that child needs some additional supports. So those are just some kind of immediate responses to if a child reports that they're feeling sad on that particular survey. There's restorative practices, community building practices that are across our sites. Teachers are learning and implementing. But we do see that as an area of growth and something that we will address for our third through fifth graders in the upcoming year.
Yeah, it's connected to the, the ideas of belonging and being that manifest itself in behaviors that, you know, oftentimes that lead to disruptions in class, fights and other things. Just something to keep an eye on. Because I, I think that, that actually also are connected to overall safety of a, a school. Right? So it just makes me sad that over half our kids are sad at that, at that. So just thanks, thanks for letting us know what the thought is to kind of increase that score.
Thank you.
Thank you. I noted that one too because of the way it was worded. It says, "Students reported experiencing feelings of sadness." But I don't know, it makes me, so I was glad that you said you'd share all the data with us, the Kelvin data, right? So I'm looking forward to that because I, you know, today I had a feeling sad. I was missing a loved one, you know, that passed away. So depending on how that's worded, that's a normal emotion too. So I, you know, if it says I, you know, don't have an adult that cares about me on campus and I feel sad, or if I had, you know, don't have friends. So I know that these sometimes have a lot of questions that dig in deep. So I'm looking forward to reading it because, you know, I encourage my students, my children to talk about feelings soon. You know, my kids might say if it says, "Have you, you know, felt sad?" Yes, but I felt happy and angry and everything else. So I don't know, I'm looking forward to digging in because I think that that could be a big alarm, but it also might be, you know, just giving them coping for how to deal with a normal emotion too. And I appreciate hearing later, not right now, but the piece about how the tool is used for looking at our school facilities. I know we spend a lot of time on facilities. And so probably we have some that are exemplary and it looks like maybe that's an average. I imagine we have some that we talk about regularly that we know that fall below good, being not just schools that are being remodeled, but also facilities in our district for our staff and for our students as well. Thinking of Yolo High School, thinking of District Office. So that would be good to have more information on that as we talk to the community as well about our facilities, about our bond money we use and about other changes we might be making in the district. And then my only other question is before this goes out, and thank you for all this work. This is, it's a nice piece to have a local indicator that you have, kind of get to really dig into more than just a state test score. So I really appreciate this. I'm wondering if maybe we would have more inclusive language if we share with, this with our community or others before it goes out this summer. When it says increased parent volunteers, maybe there's like family and caregiver volunteers, or maybe we could just consider that language of parent volunteers because we have so many grandparents and aunties and maybe older brothers that are working in our, so, so just thinking about how that word could maybe be a little bit more inclusive, I think would be great. But otherwise, I appreciate all this. Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
And so I'm going to, I was looking at your standard of priority two for Washington Middle College High School. And it's so funny that the area of focus is access to career tech, technical education or CTE. And it just so happens that literally down the hall are a bunch of CTE courses. So I understand that Washington Middle College has the access to go to the high school for sports and things like that. Can't we allow this to also be an access down the hall? So like, let's keep our minds open. It's literally right there. An area of focus, but it seems like it's a really good, like, an easy fix in that sense. I'm hoping. Easier said than done, but that's what I'm hoping. Also agree with the language with increased parent volunteers. One of the things that we definitely need to see is that our parents are being appreciated and when they do step up. So what kind of things are we doing to help our parents want to be there or want to come back? Sometimes, at least for me, I, going through it, CTE, the, the parent teacher conferences or whatever groups, it felt a little intimidating. And, and this is intimidating, but being with your own peers is a little bit more intimidating, especially when you're like, "I don't really know anybody," or maybe I do know one or two parents and they're the most vocal. And so it's like, how do you get those ones that want to help but are kind of in that, not, not so sure? So if we can provide them maybe areas of where they can help, like give them that additional guidance of, maybe not in the classroom of like, "Hey, I need you to help me with cutting some things, but maybe there's something else that we could utilize them with." That would be great. Like, almost like, let them know, "These things are coming up and these are what we want for the whole entire school year." I don't know, sign up genius. These are, you know, things that we can use your volunteer for, of volunteer hours or whatever. Just trying to make it to where they, they see what are opportunities that are available because I, as a volunteer, kind of don't really know what, what do you want me to volunteer for? What, what am I volunteering for? Well, what do these hours look like? I know I'm not getting paid, but I don't, also don't want to be doing something that is, that somebody is getting paid for and then I'm, you know, crossing that line as well. So maybe having that a little bit more like, more guidelines on that. As far as Washington Middle with the area of focus, I find it very interesting that theirs is involvement of a variety of parents. Well, they have parents, they just want a variety of them. So it's almost wondering like, well, what specifically do they want to? What is their goal? What are they aiming for? What does that actually look like? Is it a variety of color? Is it a variety of education background? Is it a variety of, like, work, like, that they do? What exactly is that entail? Because that is so broad. And I'm not saying they need specifics, but like, what are, what are they looking for? Age group? I don't know. Any young parents and older parents, grandparents? And then also the, the school climate of fifty-three percent of kids experiencing sadness. That is a little, it's a little alarming. At the same time, there's this new movie called Inside, Inside Out, and sadness was like the key to their core memories and from Riley's core memories. And so sadness wasn't even a bad thing. It was like, you needed sadness. And I know I'm going Pixar here and it's Disney, but that's just who I am. And so it's like, understanding that is definitely, like, seeing the report is definitely going to be key into understanding, well, what kind of sadness? Because sometimes it's, it's nice to have a good cry every once in a while. And, and that is pretty much all that I had. But thank you so much for all of this work. It is definitely noted and appreciated.
Thank you for the feedback.
All right. And now on to the next informational item. Presentation of the status update of the COVID funding expenditures to date. Monique Stovall.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm joined again with our Director of Fiscal Services, Billy Duba, to provide an update on our COVID expenses to date. Important to note that we're still closing the books. And so this is the information we have now. You'll see in the presentation that you have planned expenditures and we'll be able to provide an update once all of the expenditures are done through the COVID.
Great, thank you. All right. Our purpose here tonight is to provide an update on our investments into programs and services that we use the COVID relief grant for, aligned to our strategic plan. Okay, we received many different COVID-related grants. All of them have allowable uses that are specific to that grant. The Expanded Learning Opportunities or ELO and the Elementary and Secondary The expanded learning opportunities or ELO and the elementary and secondary school emergency relief three grants or S R three required board approved expenditure plans. The next couple of slides give you a summary of the grants that we have fully expended, how much we were allocated, some sample expenditures and the deadlines that were for those grants. One of the earlier grants we received was the coronavirus relief fund. We received just around $5.4 million. It was for academic support, some professional development, technology. Then we received Senate Bill of 98 for 642,000 and the governor's emergency education relief or gear one for 389,000. Both of those were used primarily for technology and instructional materials. After that, we received the elementary and secondary school emergency relief or S R one, the first round of S R money of 1.6 million dollars. And that was primarily used for health, safety and sanitation. The next wave of grants, we received S R two for 7.2 million. That was used for some software, educational software platforms, health, safety and sanitation, more technology and instructional materials. There are some salary and benefits paid for that one and academic supports and professional development. Then we have the expanded learning opportunities grant or ELOG, the S R two version of that. And it was $800,000 for safety and sanitation supplies, educational software platforms and some salary and benefit. Then we have the ELO gear two fund for 183,000 that was used for professional development and some educational software platform. Three more grants. We had the expanded learning opportunities grant, ELOG. Now that was almost 2.5 million. We use that for some educational software platforms, some summer school programs. And then we had some hire some youth outreach and some social workers. A part of the ELOG funding was dedicated for para educators in the amount of 518,000, which paid for salaries and benefits for those staff. We then have the in-person instruction or I P I grant. That was 2.8 million dollars and that was used for COVID test kits, some employee stipends, cleaning, sanitation supplies and some software. We have two grants that have some remaining amounts left. We have the ELOG expanded learning opportunities, S R three funding that was 1.4 million dollars and we have until this September 30th to spend it. There's 335,000 remaining. We plan on using it the rest of the year and the first three months of next year for social workers, some cleaning, sanitation supplies, educational software platforms, and we have some professional development scheduled the next couple of months. And we also have some S R three funding remaining. This is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief three grant. We received 16.2 million and we have until September 30th to spend this as well. There's 6.4 million remaining. Sorry about that. The planned expenditures copied from the previous slide, but they include for this one, a lot of the facilities projects, the water bottle filling station, shade structures, playground structures, resurfacing, covered lunch spaces, outdoor learning spaces. And those, those plans are, those facility projects are going to happen over the next couple of months. Tying the expenses to our strategic plan pillars, the funds that we foresee are fully expended total just over $33 million. Half of the funds that we spent were dedicated to pillar C, learning and growth opportunities for all employees. We spent 16 point almost $7 million on pillar C. We spent 4 point almost 6 million on pillar A, equity focused teaching and learning, 215,000 on pillar B, the strong partnerships with family and community. And we spent 11.6 million on pillar D, safe climate and equitable access for all. Our next steps with the COVID funding is finalizing the expenditures as we close the books and finish our facilities projects over the next few months. And then we have to evaluate the expenses that we've been spending COVID funds on and move them into an appropriate digit, district budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? None received. Have any board comments or questions? Go ahead.
Just a quick question. On the S R three money, 6.4 million, I believe. So does that money have to be earmarked by September 24th or does it have to be expended by 24?
Expended.
Because that's a lot of money to be expended. Are our projects going to be done by September?
Not all of our projects to be expended. Because we have been diligently working towards completing these projects over the last couple, we do have the option to seek a waiver from CDE, which we do to fully expend this money by the end of July. I'm sorry, January 25th. We spoke with the contractor whom we hope will, you'll approve their contract today. They think that it will be done by August, but we want to apply for the waiver anyway.
Right. I, because that was one of the things that, because I remember looking at one of our items is not until August. So I guess the question is, is the possibility of the waiver? Is there a likelihood or at all a chance that it won't be approved?
There's always a chance that it won't be approved, but we believe that we have a really strong case for it to be approved. We didn't wait to determine a plan for these monies. We have been, like I said, diligently working on this. We have been seeking, yes. But we feel very confident that.
Has there been any communications with CDE to, to figure out whether, what their, what their parameters are for, for waivers?
We have the paperwork and now that we hopefully will get the project or the contractor approved, then we'll be able to say, okay, these are the steps we've been taking. Billy will complete the application and submit it.
Okay, thank you.
Becky? Yes. All right. Thank you for this. I appreciate it. All of these different pieces coming in, different expenditures and grants and having to keep track of all the, all this and just a really unprecedented time in terms of challenges and also in terms of money we've seen. So did you have any additional staff in your office for this work? I think we should just like acknowledge how much work has happened with your department and this lift of all of these different grant opportunities, which we are so grateful to have captured for our students and for our staff. And I know it's, it's a lot of pieces, so I just really want to thank you for that. I'm wondering if we can update the agenda just so it can show the accurate expenditures for the S R three on that. Okay. And, and we have already, those are the plans, as you mentioned, the outdoor learning, the water bottle that we have already allocated on our end. So we've already, okay, moved forward with all of those. And then do you think, and maybe we just don't know because everybody's still doing this work, but that our expenditure chart that you made, the pie chart is in line with other districts or others? Or do we not have a comparison really because it's just so many different parts?
We don't, I don't have a comparison on how other districts are doing. I have heard of districts not being able to expend all of their monies. We're not, we want to make sure that we are able to spend every dollar.
Thank you for that. And then you said that as you close out your books, will we, after these have been fully expended, which is not too far away, will there be another update or is there anything more that we need to do as a board or that we would see?
There's nothing else you need to do as a board. Billy and the team will continue doing the required quarterly reports for reporting of our expenditures. However, we don't anticipate that there's any other approval or anything else that.
And then for the public, while this is broken down by grant, and I know there's probably people are interested to know what does material mean and what does support mean? But, and not that we can't still have that conversation, but those are also have been on all of our public agendas as we've gone through this time. And so all of that money has not been hidden. It's just here's the place where the grants are called out because it's, it's been a lot over the last few years of having to, to approve these different contracts and, you know, the air, you took me back to a bad time of like the air filters and the, we were COVID testing at school twice a week and, you know, so, but thank you.
All right, quickly follow up on that. You did jog in memory. So of the 6.4, that's already been earmarked and is to be expended. Is, are we going over in our budget? That 6.4? So meaning we're having to supplement with other funds from elsewhere?
Yes.
Do you have an idea to what extent? Or this, or is this money being used to supplement projects that we had already identified? And we're using, you know, say, you know, deferred maintenance fund or other?
So the first way that you shared it is, is the reality. We had, or you all had approved the plan for this, these monies to be able to complete water bottle filling, shade structures, et cetera. We have 6.4 million of S R, cost of risen. And so we are going to have to supplement the S R funding to be able to complete those projects from our deferred maintenance for about $3 million.
But their water bottle stations for our kids and shade structures.
I get it, I get it. I know, I was just thinking, I'm like, water, I mean, not water, but the fact that it went up. So it's like, we couldn't lock in that price at that moment so that way we can be good. Instead, we had to wait until it went up. And so now it costs more and so we need to pull from someplace else.
Well, I think it's important to share the history on that. As I've shared, we've been diligently working on this project. Can't remember which summer, I think it was my first summer here or second summer here. So it had to be 22, I think it was. We did put all of these projects out to bid and we received no bids. So then we had to rebound and we had to determine a new way of bidding these projects. We had to go to DSA. We had to get all of the approval. We put it out to bid and the bid came out 9.7.
Okay. Guess it is what it is. Inflation. Alrighty, well, I have no questions other than just that was my one. I'm like, wait a minute, okay. And basically piggybacking off that. So, all right, well, that's it.
Thank you.
All right. And now we're on to, and now we are on to consent, consent agenda. Are there any questions or public comments first from, on consent?
None received.
All right. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Kirby Gonzalez, moved by Vice President Pizzotti, roll call vote, trustee Wong. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye. Moving on to action items. We have a lot. So, okay. Approval of the Washington Unified School District 2024, 2025 Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP Autry Street.
Good evening again. At the June 13th board meeting, my colleague Stephanie Grote, Director of Accountability and Compliance, shared with you our 2427 LCAP plan. And so I'm here today on her behalf, asking for your approval. And so I will read our rationale and take any questions you may have. Pursuant to Education Code 52062B1, school districts are required to hold at least one public hearing to solicit the recommendations and comments of members of the public regarding the specific actions and expenditures proposed in the LCAP. The public hearing shall be held at the same meeting as the public hearing for the budget to be adopted as required by Ed Code 42127A1. The LCAP is intended as a comprehensive planning tool to support student outcomes and is an important component of the local control funding formula. Under the LCFF, all educational agencies, including school districts, county offices of education and charter schools are required to prepare an LCAP, which describes how they intend to meet annual goals for all pupils with specific activities to address state and local priorities identified pursuant to California Ed Code Sections 52060D, 52066D and 47605. The LCAP is a tool for local educational agencies to set goals, plan actions and leverage resources to meet those goals to improve student outcomes. The LCAP is a three-year plan that describes the goals, action services and expenditures to support positive student outcomes that address state and local priorities. The LCAP provides an opportunity for LEAs to share their stories or how, what and why programs and services are selected to meet their local needs. And the components of our LCAP for the 2425 year must be posted as one document assembled in the following order. Our budget overview for parents, the 2324 annual update, the 2425 LCAP template, the plan summary, how we engage our educational partners, what are our goals and actions, our increased or improved services for foster youth, English learners and low income students, our action tables, and of course, the instructions. Pursuant to Ed Code 52062B1, school districts are required to hold at least one public hearing to solicit the recommendations and comments of members of the public regarding the specific actions and expenditures proposed in the LCAP. And that public hearing was held on June 13th.
All right. Are there any public comments?
None received.
All right. Any comments from the board?
No, but I move when the time is right.
Okay. All right. Well, it sounds like we have a move by trustee Wong and second by. And so I figured we were good. And then vice, second by Vice President Pizzotti. And now we have to do roll call vote. Trustee Wong. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye.
Thank you. And I, I just want to note, and I should have said this before you took the vote. I apologize. But there may be minor tweaks to the format, you know, after, since now that you've approved it, mostly just to the format, to the last, the final document that will be published.
But it'll all be there.
Meaning not content.
Content, no, no, no substantial changes, just formatting adjustments.
But just how it looks.
Like on the parent overview budget, the numbers are kind of smushed, but those things will be cleaned up before it's posted and finalized and submitted. Yeah, no, the numbers won't change.
Content's not changing?
No.
Just how it looks so it can be readable?
Exactly.
Okay, we're good with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that applies to Washington Middle Colleges LCAP as well, which I'm up to ask for your approval of now.
Okay, well, let's go ahead.
So item P two.
So action number two, approval of the Washington Middle College High Schools 2024, 2025 Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP. Any public comments? Any public comments? Are we good? Are we do, are we doing it again? I'm sorry, I think I was confused.
I would say move.
Okay.
I think we were, we heard it.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was like, I think we're good. No public comments?
You're good, Virginia.
Okay. Hey, move by uh, Vice President Pizzotti?
I'll second.
Second by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez. Uh, roll call vote, Trustee Wong?
Aye.
Oh. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez?
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti?
Aye.
And I too say aye. Alright, moving on to approval of the Local Control Accountability Plan um, for federal addendum Autry Street.
Yes, and so this, um, the federal addendum has to be approved. Um, we're asking for approval in conjunction with the LCAP. The federal addendum basically allows us to apply for um, federal grant monies that we would use to supplement our actions that we've already outlined in the LCAP. So again, I'm going to read the rationale and take any questions you may have.
Okay.
The LCAP Federal Addendum is meant to supplement the LCAP to ensure that eligible LEAs have the opportunity to meet the LEA Plan Provisions of the ESSA. The LCAP Federal Addendum Template must be completed and submitted to the California Department of Education to apply for ESSA funding. This occurred in twenty nineteen as required. LEAs are encouraged to review the LCAP Federal Addendum annually with their LCAP as ESSA funding should be considered in yearly strategic planning. Um, and then you have the attached narrative which describes how we will use federal funds to support us achieving our LCAP goals in addition to um, our state and local funds.
Alright, any public comments?
None received.
Any from the board? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez and second by Vice President Pizzotti, roll call vote, Trustee Wong?
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez?
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti?
Aye.
And I too say aye. Alright, and now for the adoption of
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, oh, yeah, I think that was it.
Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Adoption of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Washington Unified School District Budget, Monique Stovall.
Thank you. We are back again, Billy and I, to talk about the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We held a public hearing for this item on June thirteenth and presented the budget, and earlier today, we presented a public hearing, excuse me, on the reasons for excess reserves. This evening, we're asking for your approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We did want to share some updated information. The state budget was approved a few days in advance. Um, it was signed, I believe, yesterday. We've reviewed the budget, and we don't anticipate any material changes to this budget. There are some um, items in there. They do talk about deferred revenue, excuse me, deferred cash. That deferring of cash is about one month. Because we do not have any challenges in our district with our cash availability, we don't anticipate that this will negatively affect our so therefore, we request approval.
Alright, are there any public comments?
None received.
Any questions from the board, comment?
Yeah, I had just a quick, quick question. Based on this year's budget, does it still look like it is the I guess, eh, how's, how do I say, the most prudent thing to do to um, make budget stability plans for next year?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Alright. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Move by Vice President Pizzotti?
I second.
Second by Trustee Wong, a roll call vote, Trustee Wong?
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez?
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti?
Aye.
And I too say aye. Okay, and we're going on to the next. See, you get to stay up. I didn't realize you guys got smart and kept out the same person up. Alright, approval of the Joint Use Lease Agreement between the Yolo County Children's Alliance, YCCA, and Washington Unified School District, Monique Stovall.
Thank you. At this time, we are requesting your approval to, in essence, renew our agreement with YCCA for the use of the Alice Norman Facility. The terms of the agreement are pretty much the same as they've been over the past few years with one major difference. This year, we request entering into an agreement for only one year. That way, we can evaluate the district's needs for the Alice Norman Facility. Some key components of it, to clarify, um, there is no cost to YCCA, and the district will continue to provide the custodial and maintenance services for the facility as has been done in the
Are there any public comments?
None received.
Do we have any comments from the board or questions?
Quick question.
Yes.
So this is the same, basically, a rollover of the language as we've had with YCA, YCCA in the past?
Yes.
Do we require other um, other organizations that might be a nonprofit that use our facilities to pay? Uh, janitorial, custodial, electrical, whatever?
Yes.
And is the rationale behind that because they're serving children in our schools and community that, that we do not allow that? Or we, eh, we, we pick up that cost?
Unfortunately, I don't know the rationale. This agreement um, was in place prior to my joining the district.
Alright, thank you.
Any other comments?
I can speak to that um, as well, since I was on the board, uh, when we uh, made these agree, this first agreement. Um, the idea was thinking about, I think we even used the term back there, community schools, and thinking about having partnering with nonprofits to work with the district. But it, there was definitely a lot of dialogue then, as I think there should be again, which is why I appreciate a one-year agreement um, about custodial, about the impact on the district. And so it's one thing to say, here's a facility that um, you know, we'd love to bring in a, a nonprofit to house, but it's another now if we're accruing um, on top of maintenance, I read the agreement, on top of maintenance, um, it wasn't clear to me what the custodial commitment would be. It wasn't clear. I had thought that, like, for example, vacuuming the daily maintenance they did themselves, and it was like, once a week, custodial garbage goes out. That's what I remember it being in the past, but maybe that's been different since this hasn't come to us in a while. Um, but I think that those are all things that we um, should revisit, and in terms of electricity and all of the things that normal uh, buildings do. You know, my mom's on the board of a nonprofit, and they pay for their facilities. So I do think that there's things that we should explore and talk about, especially as we go into our own budget, we think about um, time of our employees at the school. And I'd be interested to know that, maybe a breakdown down, you know, with what does that look like in terms of the custodial there? Am I, am I off on that when I say that I thought it was um, just taking out trash and not vacuuming, or am I not off on that? And if you don't know right now, that's okay.
I do know. So custodial services are the same as they would be at any other school site. Um, since I have the district, I can't speak to, again, how it was done prior, but we do provide daily custodial services, especially since we're um, looking at the facility as a whole. Um, soon, we'll be coming with a request for an agreement for the YCOE, and so we have small children on the campus, you know, vacuuming, et cetera. So any services that we would provide to our other campuses, we're providing those custodial.
Does YCOE, um, I know they took over, for context, Head Start, we were um, our state preschool, I get them mixed up sometimes.
Head Start.
So they, um, we had that program. I know some of my colleagues were on, uh, you were on the board too, but um, and the district was having a hard time maintaining um, those preschool classrooms, and so it was, we actually reached out to the county and asked them and had a partnership so that they could come and um, serve kids, and it would fall under their umbrella, and they would use that facility. And I know that we have approved on this board, like, new playground structures and enhancements that they have paid for or got grants for. Um, but are they paying for any custodial or any electrical in that agreement? Okay, okay. Alright, well, maybe those are some considerations we can think about, um, moving forward as we look at our budget.
Thank you.
Will that be a one-year, two? Sorry. I know that's a different agenda item, but that would be good if we make that a one, just while we think about those implications.
Yes, our intent um, is again for us to be able to evaluate our needs for the entire campus, and so we do plan for that agreement to be one-year. The same terms, same timeline.
Well, we appreciate the, you know, the, the looking into, so that way we can prepare for what we all know is, is coming down um, sooner than later, so. We appreciate that. I don't have any comments other than that.
I move.
Alright, we got moved by Vice President Pizzotti?
I'll second.
Second by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez, roll call vote, Trustee Wong?
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez?
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti?
Aye.
And I too say aye. Alright, and now we're going on to the adoption of the Resolution number two, three, two, four, um, forty-five, approving and adopting developer fee justification study and authorization increased in statutory level one developer fee, Monique Stovall. Welcome back.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, we held a public hearing regarding our developer fees, and at this time, we're requesting approval to increase the residential developer fee cost at thirty, by thirty-eight dollars per square foot, and the commercial industrial cost by six cents per square foot.
Are there any public comments?
None received.
Any comments from the board or questions?
I do.
Yes.
Um, thank you. So um, I just wanted to um, think about this, is, I, I feel like when we've looked at our demographer reports that have come to us, which I know are by no means perfect, and that things change as people, you know, start building and whatnot. Um, but I don't remember thinking we were going to have from that, and so tell me if I'm wrong, a projection of four hundred and thirty students in five years. I don't feel like it showed that.
Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And so hearing this then, and then seeing this, I think um, requires in addition to this, so this piece, but also for us to have, um, I think, another maybe study session with a demographer and to go over this, because as we think about four hundred and thirty students, I know you said, you know, we can't build a school, but we also need to think about where the kids are, because I, you know, we're in classrooms and walking through places where principals are saying, I don't really have enough room for kids, let alone four hundred and thirty. And it also, we think about, I guess, we need to think about what we um, think is kind of the standard for a district as a school site, because we have schools where students, we have over a thousand students, and we have schools that are very close to a thousand students, and then we have schools that are half that size. And so I don't necessarily think just plopping, not that you would do this, but you know, putting, or that we would even approve it, but putting more portables on a space that's already at a thousand or whatnot is what's right for kids or a school site. Um, but also, there I, is a lot to be said, and it's happened, you know, any school you go to, you will see students in our district who are walking to school, who are riding their bikes to school. My children rely on that, they ride their bikes to school. Um, and so, um, you know, there's something really important about that, and being able to get to your school community. And so I, I think we this data to me was a little bit surprising, and so um, I just really want to follow it up and say it publicly as of, you know, as other people read this and hear these numbers too, that we should dig more into this and have a conversation about what, what that plan's gonna be. Um, and it's hard to know, because they're not here today, you know, but I think we need to really be prepared and, and, you know, wrap our minds around what might be coming.
Absolutely. Um, at our last board meeting, I had mentioned that we are engaging actually this company, a local company in another demo, demographic study, so that we can really dig down into what's really happening today. As we've seen over the past couple years, um, we anticipated that we would have a steep decline in enrollment, and we're not realizing that as steep of decline. So we want to reevaluate, where are we now?
Alright, thank you. Well, then with that assurance, um, then I will make motion to
Before we move.
Oh, sorry, unless there's other questions.
No, it's okay. But no, that's real, I was just gonna say, piggybacking off, this is really good, really good that we start looking at that, because those numbers were very surprising to me. Four hundred and thirty students that were projected to come. In addition, when we have these studies, we're told that there's gonna be a decline, but yet, so far over the years, we've been steady. So it's like, we keep projecting that we're gonna have a decline, but yet, we're not declining. We're either having more kids, I'm not sure where all these kids are coming from, when we're told that there's really no more kids coming. Um, and then we, of course, go outside and you see these apartment complexes going up, um, and not small ones, they're huge. Um, it's, it's it's just a little bit alarming, and I don't know if we have the infrastructure or the capacity for what is to come, and um, definitely having those sessions so we can start being prepared. I think we should definitely be proactive and not reactive in these, in this area. So um, I'm looking forward to those sessions, and with that, I
I'll make one more comment, sorry.
Well, just, sorry.
Well, I wanted to say, I, I realized, oh, I'm really sorry. I realized I wanted one more thing for the record with what you were saying is, um, we also had surprises we've heard from city council, and we don't want to have that. You know, we want to make sure that we're in alignment, and so um, any decisions that are going through the Planning Commission and happening while you, you might um, be abreast of that, you know, we don't want to be sitting in a uh, in a presentation for the city and going, wait, what's going on? What's being built? How many new homes? And so I feel like that's been a constant um, theme for many years is um, not knowing some of the projects that are coming or being out of alignment sometimes with what are, we just want to move in the same way, because we're all here to serve our community.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and I do recall reading what our analysis is on how many spaces we have available, right? Like, we have over two thousand spaces available in which we could put kids uh, if push came to shove, but I don't believe they're all in the places where the growth is. So that means the hard conversation, boundary issues, and having that discussion. Not sure that I want to be here for that. So um, I'm just saying that that's something we're gonna really have to start focusing on as some of these um, uh, new facilities come online uh, in our community, the apartments that will be uh, developed and built. And one of them's opening soon, that's a very big one, um, in a boundary area where a school is impacted, is, you know, basically overflowing. So that is going to be a struggle.
So yeah, lots of discussions that need to be had.
Absolutely.
But on that note, Clerk Kirby Gonzalez moved, if there are no more comments?
I second.
And Vice President Pizzotti second. Roll call vote, Trustee Wong?
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez?
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti?
Aye.
And I too say aye.
Thank you.
Welcome. Alright, and on to the next. Approval of the Disclosure of Collective Bargaining Agreement between Washington Unified School District and the West Sacramento Teachers Association and Management Confidential Employees, Monique Stovall.
Thank you. We are requesting your approval, which is related to the financial impact of the proposed agreements that will be coming for approval through our interim Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources in the coming aspects of this meeting. We are requesting your approval for the agreement between WSTA, and it also includes the financial impact for our management and confidential employees. The financial impact of the agreement for twenty-four, twenty-five is four point two million. Would you like me to read the terms of the agreement, which will be shared later by our interim Assistant Superintendent?
Likely do for our other employee groups.
For transparency?
Yes, please. I will happily read those. Okay. Uh, the agreement includes the following, WSTA bargaining unit members will receive an ongoing four percent increase, which will be added to the certificate salary schedules. The annual stipends for B-clad, master's degrees, and doctoral degrees will be increased by one hundred dollars, and the new stipend, annual stipend will be eleven hundred dollars. The salary schedule will include two new stipends, a thirteen hundred annual stipend for our special education staff, RSP, SLP, psych, SDC, and program specialists, and a five hundred dollar annual stipend for National Board for Professional Teaching Standards Certification. For benefits, our certificated For benefits, our certificated employees will receive an additional two thousand dollars per year on their monthly premiums, which is the employer contribution. For employees only, the district contribution will increase from seven thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents to nine thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents, which is two hundred dollars per month. Benefits are paid for ten months out of the year. For employee plus one dependent and employee plus family, district contribution will increase from eleven thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-three cents to thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-three cents. Again, an increase of two hundred dollars per, per month for a total of two thousand dollars per year. And like the other benefits, our benefits are paid on a ten-month cycle. Next, our classified management and confidential employees will receive an ongoing four per, four point five percent increase and our certificated management employees will receive an ongoing four percent increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments?
None received.
Are there any comments or questions from the board?
No.
All right. Do we have a motion to move?
I move.
Moved by Vice President Pizzotti.
I'll second.
Second by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez. Roll call vote, Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye. All right. And stay up there. Approval of the disclosure of the collective bargaining agreement between Washington Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, River, Riverview, Chapter one, six, eight. Monique Stovall.
Thank you. Similar to the previous item, we are requesting your approval for the financial impact of our proposed agreement with our CSEA unit. The financial impact for twenty-four, twenty-five is one point seven million. I'll read the general terms of the agreement. All CSA, CSEA employees will receive a four point five percent ongoing salary increase. All CSEA employees on steps A and B will move to step C. CSA employees will be on step five, or excuse me, step L five for two years instead of three years. CSA employees will be on step L six for two years instead of three years. Step L seven will be added to the classified salary schedule and a five percent, excuse me, and five percent higher than step six. District contribution to benefits will increase by two hundred dollars per month for a total of two thousand a year. And again, these are paid ten months out of the year. And the shift differential will increase from thirty cents to six dollars per hour. Sixty cents.
I was like.
I'm sorry, to sixty cents per hour. Thank you.
I was gonna say, all right.
I knew this guy was real happy.
He's like, I'd like that shift, please. All right. Are there any public comments?
None received.
All right. Are there any comments from the board or questions?
Nope.
Nope.
No.
No, I move when the time is ready.
All right. Trustee Wong moves.
I second.
Vice President Pizzotti seconds. Roll call vote, Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye.
Thank you.
All right. And now approval of the tentative agreement between Washington Unified School District and West Sacramento Teachers Association for the period beginning July first, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Fara. Welcome. You're next.
Thank you. Good evening, President Coffey, Resties, Dr. Hildred. I am pleased to share tonight that after several negotiation sessions, WST, WUST and WSTA has reached tentative agreements on four articles in the collective bargaining agreement, including compensation and benefits for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. I'd like to thank WSTA's lead negotiator, Mr. Stephen Bees for his leadership, President Nep for his support and the entire WSTA and WUST negotiation team for their dedication and hard work. As President Nep shared earlier this evening, both members of the team, team members shared that they really appreciated the IBB process in the negotiation sessions, even though there are times that the process took a little bit longer, but it allowed the flexibility to have deeper and meaningful conversations that helped build stronger relationships. Tonight, we are seeking your approval for the WUST and WSTA's tentative agreements.
All right. Are there any public comments?
None received.
Are there any comments from the board?
Just quickly, I wanted to say thank you to both WST and WSTA for their hard work in hammering this out and also for leaning into IBB. I, I've brought it up a lot, a lot, a lot of times over the course of the years and I'm, I'm a big firm believer in it. And I'm really happy that it seemed to pay dividends this year as, as it seemed like there was less hard feelings. I, we seem to hear less from angry teachers at board meetings, which is always a goal, right? So I, I just wanted to say thank you guys for all leaning into this process and you know, I hope that this is a, a new wave moving forward with both bargaining units.
Thank you. We're hoping.
There any others? Job well done.
I move.
I'll second.
Moved by Vice President Pizzotti, second by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez. Roll call vote, Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye. There. Approval of the tentative agreement between Washington Unified School District and the California School Employees Association and its review chapter one, six, eight for the period beginning July first, twenty twenty-four and ending June twenty, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Fara. Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm equally pleased to share that after several negotiation sessions, WUST and CSEA have reached tentative agreements on seventeen articles, including compensation and benefits for the twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. I would like to thank President Gandara and his negotiation team for their hard work and commitment to this process and helping and reaching these agreements. I also would like to thank our WUST, USD team for all of their hard work and making this important work a priority. Although we did not engage in the IBB process with CSEA, but both teams did express at the end that we had many IBB moments where we were able to have deeper conversations and talking about intent and impact and which helped us, you know, understand each other and build stronger relationships. I, I truly believe and that the commitment and support demonstrated by CSEA's team has set the stage for future collaboration outside of negotiation. So with that, tonight I am seeking approval for the tentative agreements between WUST and CSEA.
All right. Are there any public comments?
None received.
All right. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, just one quick one because I made a comment about how great WSTA's agreement went. I wanted to also credit President Gandara and W, WST for their hard work as well. I, I do believe that, you know, it really takes a collaboration to get through negotiations and seeing, you know, all the, it's really how the sausage is made, you know, what is what comes out of a, a, a negotiations. And with the understanding that our, our budget is in, you know, a little bit of fiscal peril, that our unions, our collective unions, our, our partners, both accepted the understanding that this is for the betterment of the good of the whole. And, you know, while they, they would certainly have liked more, it is definitely, I think, a sign that their willingness to work instead of fight was just, I, I think a testament to the understanding of the problem, which then goes back to our team in being transparent and explaining this is what we're facing. With that, I will move.
All right. Moved by Vice President Pizzotti. I'll second. Second by me. And now, I was gonna say, and, uh, vote. Trustee Wong.
Aye.
She did this too.
I know she did this.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye. All right. And now we're going to number thirteen ahead of that was switched, right? Yeah, okay. So approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five salary schedules for classified employees effective July first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. And thank you for switching this item. We are seeking approval for the draft classified salary schedule for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year that you have before you. This salary schedule reflects the four point five percent increase in salaries for our classified members and will go into effect July first, twenty twenty-four. Earlier, our CBO, Ms. Stovall, was able to provide details of which, what the, our, these, these salary schedules will have for the next school year. And so the financial impact for the increase, for this increase will be nine hundred and forty-seven thousand.
All right. Are there any public comments?
None received.
Are there any comments from the board or questions?
No, just good news to get it up for hiring.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. So moved. Moved by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez, second by Trustee Wong. Roll call vote, Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye. All right. And now, that was thirteen, which is now a number eleven, approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five salary schedules for certified employee effective July first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you again. We are seeking approval for the draft WSTA salary schedule to increase salaries for WSTA members by four percent for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. The financial impact for this increase is one million eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I do want to call out, though, that there is a clerical error on the salary schedule as it does not show that a hundred dollar increase in the master's and doctorate stipend, degree stipend. However, the financial impact amount and the AB twelve hundred, which was earlier approved, reflects the cost of this increase and therefore I am seeking approval for this item. It's just a clerical error on, on the document. The financial impact was included. This increase was included in the financial impact.
Okay. Are there any public comments?
None received.
I'm just a little confused. I'm sorry. It was it, it doesn't make a difference to the number that we're approving or any official documents. Because I'm wondering, would we have to, would we have to in our motion, do an amended motion?
Make a motion to approve with the addition of the stipend.
Okay, okay.
Yes. It, it does not make any difference in the amount, the financial impact, because this increase was included and calculated in that.
Okay, all right. Okay, now.
All right. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion?
When the time is ready.
Trustee Wong moves.
I'll say.
Vice President Pizzotti seconds. Roll call vote, Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Sorry, I'm just backing up to my thought because we talked about making the motion with the
The amended.
So I think you should maybe withdraw and restate your motion with the addition of the master's and doctorate stipend reflected. Because we're not approving as it says.
She said yes.
I'll, I'll, I'll withdraw my second, therefore.
You're trying to pull a Virginia. Okay, so he is motioning to approve with the amendment of the documents.
Yes.
To be.
With the accurate.
The accurate.
Master's and doctorate. Doctorate stipend.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we're motioning.
Second.
Second. And now we are seconding. And now roll call vote, Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Sorry, Clerk Kirby Gonzalez. Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye.
Don't realize I'm three hours ahead, right?
Yeah, we got it.
All right. We're almost there.
Almost there. We're almost there. Okay, so now with that amendment, now are we good to move, motion?
Next item.
The next item or this item still?
No.
No, we're good. Okay. Just checking. All right, next item. What is the next item? Thank you. Approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five salary schedule for certified classified management and confidential employees effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Fara.
Thank you. Resties, you have before you the draft salary schedule for our certified and classified management and confidential employees for the twenty-four, twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. You will notice that for the, for the certified management salary schedule, the increase is in alignment with the WSTA certificate, certificated employees increase, which reflects four percent. However, for the classified management and confidential employees, the increase reflects the four point five, which is similar to CSEA's classified increase. The financial impact for this item is seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand. I do also want to call out the similar clerical error with one, the hundred dollar increase not on the salary schedule, which did, was included and calculated in the financial impact. However, it's just a clerical error that we would fix.
Okay.
Masters.
Masters and doctors.
Are there any public comments?
None received.
All right. Any comments from the board?
I, I will make motion to approve with the masters and doctorate stipend.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Second.
I'll second.
Second by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez. Roll call vote, Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye. And now on to approval of Swinton. Did I say that right?
Looks like it.
I hope though, Swiner. Swinton Builders Independent Contractors Agreement for the SR three projects. Monique. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Did I say that right?
You sure did.
Okay.
Yes. So this evening, we are requesting your approval to enter into an agreement with Swinter.
Swinton. Excuse me, please forgive me. Swinton Building Builders Independent, I'm sorry, Swinder.
Yeah, it's okay.
It's okay. For the SR three projects. The general contractor for these projects, we did go out to bid as we shared. Unfortunately, we only had one bid and it was this company. We feel confident about this company, however, because it is a very well-known company in the school construction industry. It is a large company and has plenty of resources to help us to be able to begin and complete these projects, what we believe in an expeditious manner. The total cost of the agreement would be nine point seven million. As shared earlier in our conversations with the SR three updates, this will be funded through two funding sources, our deferred maintenance fund and also our SR three. We request your approval for this agreement.
Do we have any public comments?
None received.
Comments from the board?
So SR three, or so six point four from SR three, three point three from deferred maintenance. I got it. I move.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and roll call vote, Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye. Get those water bottles. All right, next one. And approval of Cervantes Inspection Services Independent Contractor Agreement for Special Services for the Inspector of Record for the SR three project.
Thank you. So thank you for your approval of the general contractor for our SR three projects. When we have these type of projects, we do need to have what's called an inspector of record.
When we have these type of projects, we do need to have what's called an inspector of record on a project to ensure that everything is done correctly. Therefore, we request your approval to enter into this agreement for 110,400 dollars paid for via the S R 3 project, excuse me, S R 3 fund.
Are there any public comments? None received. Do we have any comments from the board or questions? So move. Right, so we're moving Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Second.
Second by Vice President Pizzotti, roll call vote, Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye. Aye. And all right, approval of TerraCon's Independent Contractor Agreement for Special Services for Construction and Material Testing for the S R 3 projects.
Thank you, we're bringing this to you now that you've approved the general contractor for our S R 3 projects and we are requesting approval of this agreement for about 120,000. What this company does is with many of our other companies, or excuse me, our other major projects, is they do soil work to ensure that the foundation for these projects are sound as in compliance with the Department of State Architects. We ask for your approval.
Are there any public comments? None received. Are there any comments from the board? Um, I, I have one. Soil and earthwork, what kind of I guess, what kind of ground would they be breaking for this project?
So I'll ask our facilities director to come up and correct me for anything that I misrepresent. But when we think about putting in new playground structures, we need to make sure that the ground is
I was thinking water, for whatever reason, I thought it was just water and I go.
And shade structures as well.
Got it, okay. Thank you, that was, that's what I needed.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Needed to make that connection and that is all I had, so with that, I will motion.
Second.
All right, second, Vice President Pizzotti, and roll call vote, Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye. All right, and now we are on to board governance. Um, it is the first read of Board of Trustees Governance Handbook for 2024. Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you, President Coffey. Um, this item is coming forward for the board to review changes, recommended changes from the Governance Handbook Subcommittee who has taken the time to meet back in September of 2023 to review the handbook that was last read and adopted back on March 24th of 2022. And we wanted to see if there was a need for any update, so it was reviewed in September. Um, there were some, uh, by President Coffey and, uh, Trustee Wong and we made some recommendations, sent them to our legal counsel and then the new Governance Handbook Subcommittee met in June with Clerk Kirby Gonzalez and Trustee Wong reviewing it. And so what we did is took all of the changes and provided the handbook for trustees to review what was in March and then what we are proposing for June, but we summed it up on a sheet to help track what changes were being made. And so, um, wanted to provide that to you in case there were any additional questions or clarifications that we need to have the Governance Handbook Subcommittee review. And then if not, we will bring it forward. If there are changes, we can bring it forward for a second read with the goal for adoption prior to the new school year.
All right. Are there any public comments? None received. Any from the board?
I have some comments too that I can share from our meeting. Um, I feel like all of our brains work differently and for mine doesn't really work this way in terms of the document of what there was and is, so maybe this, hopefully this is how all of your brain works work, but to me, it's a little hard to digest these three documents and they're not, we don't have them printed in front of us, so. Um, but, but one thing I want to call out that I don't see called out here and, and Trustee Wong and I talked about was that originally it discusses, um, there was a process, um, before, um, long ago, I don't even know how many years now, where we were filling out a sheet if we had a future agenda item and we filled out a little sheet, fed why, and then submitted it and asked. And we haven't had that practice in a very long time. And so, um, it's not called out here, but it's on page six. And we wanted to just bring that to the board here and talk to you all about. It was put in place at a time if, if there is, um, maybe one board member who's asking excessively for things that other board members, you know, or don't know the rationale or they seem out of our purview, it was more of a, something like that, so they would give all of their rationale there to the president and they would look at it, but there haven't seemed to be any issues with our process that we've been doing it now that I see. Um, and so, um, but we didn't want to remove it without having if you felt we needed something like that, but. So it's page six, the last bullet, so that might be helpful to just have the board make a decision on there were a couple like that. Do you remember what the other one was, Trustee Wong?
Yeah, it's almost midnight here.
I know, I thought they were gonna be, I thought it was gonna be highlighted and so
It's my fault for not.
What we can do at a future, at the next
Yeah.
board meeting in July, we can come back, bring this back and have everything printed and, and highlighted and we will send it, uh, one more time to the Subcommittee just for that final review with all of the, the changes that we discussed at our meeting last week.
Mm-hmm.
To see, to ensure that we captured everything, so why, I, I recommend, why don't we do that?
That's okay. Um, I will be, as I've shared publicly, um, before we made, we only recently made our calendar for this coming school year and so I had a planned vacation that I will not be able to call in for the July meeting and we decided not to try to move the meeting around my schedule with all of our staff on their vacation. So I will not be at that meeting, um, but that was the one maybe think on of how you want public comment.
Was it, uh, Clerk Kirby, was it the abstention stuff?
Oh, I think it was, we also talked about if you abstain, um, providing a reason for abstention and that's was Marie's recommendation as well.
Yeah. I was actually, I have a question on that one, because it also says the abstentions cannot count towards a majority vote, so if there's if there's, say, four people, um, four people at a board meeting and a board member abstaining. Um, so that means that's two. Does that mean three have to vote in concurrence? Can it be two to one?
Correct. It's clear in the manual that, actually Marie helped us with it, that an abstention isn't an effective, no.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So effectively that does mean.
Yeah, that's in the, um, that's in the handbook.
So as always, for somebody that passes, takes three votes, whether somebody abstains or votes.
Okay, so three is a threshold regardless, okay. And then there's a section that basically says, there is a pretty big change in our policy, um, our handbook, uh, about complaints and negative, uh, I guess, testimony about district employee. Um, it says.
I don't know if it's new, I think it's been in there.
Well, it says the board will not entertain, uh, eight. Says the board will not entertain comments regarding confidential student matters. The president is responsible for reminding the public that complaints or derogatory remarks about employees should be submitted in writing um, in or, in ordinance with the district complaint procedures. However, the board cannot legally prohibit the public from speaking negatively about district employee.
That's exactly what's in our comments that are read.
But it says it, it's a change before, I remember, I, I thought we protected our, our, our employees by saying if anybody comes, if anybody testifies and starts, you know, calling out individual staff, usually the president kind of shuts them down and says, will you please submit that in writing so we can more appropriately address your complaints? So it doesn't have to be in public.
No, I mean, this is actually a Marie addition. We can't legally prohibit the public from speaking, we can't prohibit it.
But the president is responsible, as I think we've all kind of had to do, unfortunately of
Take my chance.
Of stopping, well, we have stopped to remind people and I think generally, um, people stop. Now, when it's us, it's a little different, we're fair.
Yeah.
But when it's against our employees stopping, so the, the board president does have an obligation to stop the meeting and to address it. Um, but legally, we cannot censor them. We can turn off their mic. That's what I mean.
Correct.
And then they're legally liable for what they said.
Yeah. Correct. That's why we read the statement.
Yeah.
Not a change, it's just the law.
I think your point goes. You want to do the rest later, as was mentioned? And that was the big one to kind of do.
I think this is fine.
Okay.
But it, it. That was the only, that was the only one that was tripping, those two items were the only ones that were kind of tripping me up.
Well, then you'll have trustee the negative.
Yeah. Okay, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna have another meeting to discuss that. Okay. So.
Yeah, well, I think we discuss it now because the second term is for adoption.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be, we just talked about since that, yeah, it, it.
Okay, so next, uh, board superintendent comments. Dr. Hildreth.
I just want everyone to have a well-deserved, uh, summer break. There are still a lot of great things happening in our district, different programs with our English Learner Summer Institute, our DI, our dual immersion summer institute. We've had, um, summer programs at Yolo High School for students to extend their credits. Um, we've had, um, a program for our special students in the special education program, native education program at River City. We've also had, um, programs for credit recovery, we have Camp Yampa, we have Freedom Schools. So there's a still continues to be great things happening in WUSD year round. Um, so, so thankful for all of the staff who are leading these wonderful programs and as we are visiting sites, we're seeing that students are really excited and getting a lot out of the programs that we're offering. So just want to say thank you for those who are still working um, and glad to be a part of the people who will be able to take a break in a week. That's it for me.
Trustee Wong.
I'll keep it short, just appreciative of staff, um, on the PD. I've heard from some teachers who came back from Denver, super excited about the training. Um, and really just suggesting that it's just not the same core of people, just like, as many people you can train, you should, you should send them all, you should send them all. So really, really good to hear from folks who, you know, at the end of the school year, they were like, oh, we have to go and then coming back like super juice about like this next year and wanting to spread the love. So I just wanted to give you all some kudos to, um, kind of building that infrastructure for, for our staff um, and laying that foundation and, uh, just really just proud of our summer schools. And again, um, just, compared to other districts, honestly, we just have such a breadth of, um, you know, summer programming across, um, kind of, across the, the district, but also, um, again, just available for everybody, right, targeted towards certain groups, but also available for everybody. So I know that people really appreciate that. Um, and lastly, just really proud of our partnership with the city around the home run and internship programs. And just want to acknowledge kind of, uh, an area, a soft spot for me is actually um, that we are placing, uh, students in family childcare homes and micro production and giving them badges, which I think we've, uh, talked about this for, for some time, but again, the pipeline to, um, early learning and potential, like, you know, teachers. And so just super excited that that is a new-ish, this is, I think, the second year that they've done family childcare home placements for our students, so, um, just really excited to see what that's gonna yield because that is really about going into our kids and our workforce. That is it for me.
Thank you. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Um, yeah, I love that, I got my start with ECE units and preschool, um, and childcare and, and uh, what a gift for all of us, I know as, as a mom, I think of our, uh, early childhood educators as our co-parents along with grandparents and everyone else before they come to us and, um, and with that, I think it's an important point that, uh, Trustee Wong brings up, the home run interns and we're also serving many of them within our schools. And so some, they often do a celebration and we have not, um, been part of that. So maybe our staff can just reach out and make sure that we know when their celebration is. Oh, good, okay, good. Perfect, okay, good, because I think, um, if we can be there, we would love to be there to celebrate our kids, um, for that. And what a gift to, um, have this meeting tonight with our agreements with all of our, uh, labor partners and all of our employees. Every employee is going to, um, in July, enjoy a little, um, you know, a bit of a bump, which is, I know, very much needed. And, um, and so, and appreciate it. We can talk a lot about how much we appreciate everyone, but it, um, feels good to also have that piece. It's an important part to offer, uh, good compensation to our employees. Um, I wanted to also give a shout out to the staff, we have multiple people who've been working on that golden bell application and I want to, uh, thank them all for that work and, um, excited to see what comes of it. Um, I also wanted to bring up that as we think about all of the summer programs, because it is so true, we have incredible programs. Uh, Camp Yampa has a showcase, um, next Wednesday at, they have two, they have one at nine o'clock and one at 10:00 and that is at, uh, over at Bright, um, and you consider Washington Middle College, it's their cafe though, Bright Cafe is where they do it. Um, and that's a really nice opportunity, um, to show your kids too, if you have students who, uh, might be eligible next year. It's, uh, for our middle school, to be middle school students, um, entering, so, um, that's a great program to go check out. Um, I also did not acknowledge, and I want to just do it, uh, quickly, that on the local indicator piece, um, the access to a broad course study, we had talked about this a lot in our initial equity work in Washington Unified, but to now see it call out, out in the priority, which is that we're looking at students who have a broad course of study, but then we're diving really deep to say, um, we have some issues in terms of disparities of race, income, language and ability, income in terms of who is having some of those course access. And I just really appreciate that that's called out in here and that that's something that all of the staff is working on and looking at because I think it's, um, it's just so important for our kids and for the work that we do here. And I wish I would have not acknowledged it earlier. And then I also wanted to bring up the piece about the cell phone policy, I wanted to just call it out that it is on a future board agenda item um, and that it will be in August and I look forward to that discussion. I've, uh, seen firsthand some of the negative repercussions of cell phones. Um, I think probably we all have and so, um, I look forward to what that looks like and I hope bringing in our families as well because they are a really critical piece, as are our kids, um, to make any policy work well. Um, and then as I had already shared, I will be, um, out at the July meeting unfortunately, but I will be happily joining you back in August.
All right, thank you, Vice President Pizzotti.
Yeah, once.
Can I add something, sorry, before we move on, I forgot to give some
Yes, your power's about to die. Oh, are you gonna say rock the block, say rock the block?
I wanted to give some love to the, uh, River City High School Asian American, um, National Hawaiian, uh, Islander Club came to those chambers last night because the council adopted the API resolution about a month late for, uh, History Month and they showed up and they showed out and they, they talked about the challenges they had on model minority myth and being invisible. Right? Which is oftentimes, I, you know, that's something I also share, but there, there are a lot of times that, uh, they say things or there, there's assumptions of things. And so it's really proud of them coming in to, um, receive the resolution. And so just really proud of them coming in to, um, receive the resolution during summer break, by the way. And, um, Haley Lee and specifically was their, um, their spokesperson, and she just graduated. So really just proud of them for organizing and showing up last night, so.
Thank you. We see you, and we are plugging you in.
So definitely wanted to give them a lot of love, um, for everything they said and the courage to share their story.
Thank you. All right.
All right, thank you. I once again wanted to just highlight our teams, W S T A, C S C A, and our W S D, uh, negotiators. And again, say thank you for all your hard work throughout the course of the year to get, uh, contracts done before the end of the school year, which is so very important, as well as getting ratified before the end of the school. That helps certainly with recruitment of new staff who are going to be. Um, that was just something I just want to, once again, say shout out to. That means a lot to me. So, um, thank you very much for your hard work there. Um, I just wanted to inform the board that I testified or in support or lent, lent my support to, uh, A B nineteen fifty-five, which is the LGBTQ plus, um, outing ban. And, uh, it, it was, uh, it was a pretty emotional moment to see so many people, um, who have been actually outed, come give their stories, um, and then face parental consequences at home. Right? Like, it, this was a, you know, a, a pretty hard thing to witness and watch. Um, and it was kind of, uh, it was a struggle, because, you know, I saw, you know, maybe a hundred people line up, um, to testify and support and say, me too, I, I agree, I agree. But then I saw maybe three or four hundred people, uh, Moms for Liberty, for example, and other groups, um, and come out and just espouse, you know, from my perspective, utter nonsense. Um, and, you know, I, it reminded me of the fights of the, um, vaccination days that we saw at the Capitol. And, you know, people wearing, you know, shirts that said, unvax, and proud of it. Like, you know, it just kind of took me to a, a, you know, a, a place where people asserting their individual, um, I guess I want to say entitlement, and, and it really hurt to see, like, how that entitlement hurts others. And, and, you know, I just wanted to say that I was so deeply moved to see that bill pass, uh, the committee, the education committee, and pass off the floor today. So, or last, yeah, last night, last night or today, yeah. Um, you know, it became such a, uh, heated debate in the legislature, the two legislators almost had a fistfight over it today. So, um, I, I know that it's an emotionally charged issue, but I, I just, I, I am so proud to see that going. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you. Oh, so much. I wasn't here last board meeting, um, because I actually spent some time with my son and his, um, his accolades, I guess, or his accomplishments of, with baseball. And, um, part of the reason why I'm here is for my kids. So if I can't, if I'm not here, it's because I'm with my kids or my family. So, um, so I'm just letting y'all know that yes, I like to work, but I gotta make sure that my kids know that they're important, otherwise, they're like, why are you there, mom? You say it's for me, but you're never here. Um, so just letting y'all know, that's where I was. So I didn't get to say any of the, the, oh, there was the graduations and all of that, and it was amazing, and just seeing the different schools and how they get celeb, how they celebrate their students, uh, Yolo with their, oh my gosh. I wanted to say Dennis. Yeah, that was awesome. And, um, and then, of course, uh, Washington Middle College, uh, getting all of their wonderful awards and seeing a lot of firsts, and it's just tear jerkers, and it's like, yes, they're ready to move on. And then, of course, we have River City, like, this huge momentous thing of happening. And I understand it wasn't the ideal, uh, heat conditions. Um, I don't know how it always seems to happen, you know, summer, and it's hot, and, um, perhaps if this is, if we're going to continue having an outdoor, uh, graduation ceremony, perhaps we can look at having it earlier in the day. Um, or later, but I mean, it ju, it just depends, like, you know, just taking some, somehow we have to think of our, uh, of our, our community members, um, as much as we possibly can, or maybe indoors. I don't know, just saying, throwing it out there. Okay, moving on, um, Broderick, um, Bright, there's the Rock the Block, if you didn't know, um, I'm doing a little plug for that. Um, they extended the, uh, submissions of applications for those that are in need of, or know somebody who is in need of free or repairs for their home. Um, they're accepting applications, it's Habitat for Humanity, and it's, this is something that, July twelfth, that their applications are due, but the, the actual bare build and repair doesn't happen until October. And honestly, like, this is such an amazing event where people from all over come together, and they just help build and empower a family with their home, and you, they make it beautiful. Paint, put up a fence, um, and whatnot for, um, those that are in, um, that are in need. Um, so just throwing that out there, uh, I'm looking forward to the Yolo Handball Wall, um, to soon go up sometime soon. I'm just throwing it out there, because I really want a ribbon cutting, um, and I want to do a tourney of some sort with, with all of those kids, because I know that they have been waiting so patiently. Um, in addition, uh, just throwing, also want to let people know, if they haven't seen it, that we are providing free lunches to, um, youth who are under eighteen at specific sites throughout the district. Um, one is at, at least in my area, at, uh, the Bright Cafe, uh, Washington Middle College, right there. Um, my kids go and they walk, they go get their lunch, and they eat it. Um, and then they come home, and then they tell me what they had, and I said, so did you eat it all? And they're like, we had mini corn, like, mini hot dogs. And I was like, what do you mean mini? They're like, they actually took a picture of it once, and it was like, they're this little, and they gave us chili, and so I made chili dogs. And I'm like, hey, be creative. Um, so they very much enjoy it when it, when they get something that I don't make for them. So, like, mom, what you making? PB and J, that's all we got. Um, so other than that, just throwing it out there, there's a lot of things happening within the district. So, um, just look out for those, uh, uh, those, that information if you're not seeing it. So as far as, uh, future board agenda items, um, I believe we have two of them on here. The next regular board meeting, um, is scheduled for July twenty-fifth. And Washington Unified School District Cellular Phone Policy is scheduled sometime in August. And the School Resource Officers, S R O's, discussion also to, um, be scheduled sometime in August. All right, and with that, we are not adjourning, as we have to go back into closed session. And, um, and, but once we are completed, we will come back and report out.
Right, feel free to go home.
Yeah, so y'all can go home. Bye.